Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled council meeting of Park City City Council on July 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Dee, what did you call the role?
John Lynn here.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsetta. Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Tom Penny is going to lead the invocation and Councilmember Melvin Kerr is going to lead the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Let's pray. My Lord and my God, I ask blessings from you on this city council meeting. I ask that you give the members good minds, sharp minds, to recall what they need to recall and to make good decisions. I ask that you give them good heart so that they can make decisions with passion and compassion. I ask that you give them goodwill so that they can make the decisions that their heart and mind tell them are right, no matter what anybody else is telling them. Lord bless their decisions, bless their discussion. May the people of Park City be blessed by their actions tonight. Pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. We don't have anything for awards or presentations this evening. Nobody has signed up to speak at public forum, so we'll move on to staff reports and we'll hear from our senior citizen director, Madison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. First, just a little update on the senior center. Since the beginning of the year, we've had, let's see, 514 active members. So that's at least 514 seniors who have visited the center at least once since January 1st. And we are on track to meet our programming and attendance requirements for the year with the county. As most of you probably know, we had, Chisholm Trail seniors had their annual fundraiser on July 4th, which was a big success again for them. We had about 150 people, actually that's all we're allowed to have in the building, attend, and I think the club made around $2,500 with bingo and raffle. So a big thank you to everyone who supported them. I'm also here to kind of talk about a new role I have. I was selected by Commissioner Lacey Cruz to be a part of her District 4 Citizens Advisory Committee, and it's not because I work in District 4, but I also live in District 4. So it allows me an opportunity to, I guess, advocate for the senior center and for the betterment of District 4 as a whole, and to have some face time with Commissioner Cruz and to learn a little bit more about what I can do as a citizen and an employee in the district. So that's really all I have for you this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Tom?
I was going to say I have one, and it's to provide information. There was a discussion today at the WAMPO meeting about 5310 transit, coordinated public transit funds, and it's available to outlying cities. And Derby and Hayesville are the only ones that have applied and gotten any money. And it is for disabilities, seniors, and low income, and that money is available if we apply for it.
And this is through?
It would be through Wichita Transit.
Okay.
Oh, and Lacey was at that meeting, so she probably knows more about it than I do.
Well, this is great. So that's why, that's another reason why I'm a part of this committee, so I can learn things like that.
But it's a 5310 transit fund, coordinated public transit fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. We didn't see anything from anybody else.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. That was it for staff reports this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we can approve the consent agenda as presented.
And John?
Sir.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to new business, item three, which is discuss and consider bids and contract for street paving and storm and sewer improvements for Echo Hills Commercial, second edition, phase one. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As you know, Echo Hills Commercial, second edition, phase one, is located on the north side of East 53rd Street North, and it is west of Air Cap Drive. The developer, Mike Loveland, presented petitions for water sewer and street improvements back in October of last year, and they were approved by council, as was the engineering contract for the design bidding and inspections with Baughman Company pending the letter of credit that they were required to provide. The water and sewer improvements were started earlier this year and completed in April. Following that, council then again proved a second contract with Baughman to design, bid, and inspect the street improvements to serve lots 1 and 2 on Block A, as well as Lot 1 on Block B. A bid opening was conducted earlier last month on June 18th, and a total of four companies submitted bids. Pearson Construction LLC submitted the lowest bid at $289,547. That bid amount is well below the engineer's estimate of $332,459, and is well within the petition amount of $495. Funding naturally is authorized. Funding via temporary financing would be followed by long-term GO bonds, and staff is recommending the approval of the bid tabulation, which is included in your packet, and then authorizing the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Pearson Construction LLC at an amount not to exceed $289,547.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Sean or any discussion? George?
Well, I just have a question maybe for the mayor is, Mr. Loveland, I haven't seen him up here for a while. Has he quit bringing us up to date on stuff?
We've had some discussions with him. We know of a few things that have been sold, but as far as him coming back, really unless he's got something ink dried on paper, I just don't care to hear the lips move anymore.
Okay. Fair enough.
But I will say that there has been some purchases. There are a few things that are coming.
Yes, and if I can expand on that, being new, Mike and I have met a couple times over the past couple months, and he's driven me on the property, and I've kind of heard some of the previous propositions, proposals that have come forth and everything like that. But currently, right now, it is open record because an application has submitted. Next Monday, Planning and Zoning will be considering a zoning case for three, possibly four lots there at the hard corner of 53rd and Air Cap, across the street to the east from Arby's. So that should be going to Planning, the Planning Commission next Monday, and then on the 23rd of this month, it'll be coming to council for approval.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Jim?
Just to clarify, this is the street to give Atwood's access?
It is the street along the west side of Atwood's. So it would serve not only Atwood's, but also, I think you've all seen it in concept renderings before, apartment complexes on the far west-hand side of the property. That's the road that we're talking about.
Okay. I don't have any more questions, so I would move to approve the bid with Pearson Construction in the amount of $289,547 for street paving and storm sewer improvements for Echo Hills Commercial, second edition, phase one.
And Brandy?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item four, which is discuss and consider purchase of in-vehicle tablet computers and related accessories. Chief Bossen?
Mr. Mayor, council members, the police department's in-car computers are in dire need of replacement. And I've mentioned this before, I know I mentioned it the night we discussed the budget. They're roughly, the ones we have now are roughly five years old. They're experiencing an increasing number of failures here just in recent weeks and months, and so we're really needing to replace them sooner than, we were hoping to wait until next year. It's in the budget for next year, but I think we need to do it now because we're getting to the point where it's causing some difficulties with our operations where we don't have computers available like we should have. Originally, we purchased 14 laptops. Eleven of those were new. Three of those were purchased used. The warranties on most of those have already, four of those have expired, I'm sorry, and then the other 10 will expire in November of this year. I'm sorry. 10 of those expired November of last year, and then four of them have already expired. No, I'm sorry, that's a misprint on the, yours may say 2019, and that's correct. I'm sorry, I have a copy, it says November 2018, so yours is correct. They'll expire November 2019, and we have four that have already expired. We've researched replacements. The brand that we keep coming up with is GTAC. That's the brand that we currently use. It's the most economical, it seems to be, for the money, a balance between being rugged and also being at a good price point. The attachments that I submitted to you are for purchasing 11 new tablets and the related accessories that go with them, the docks and the keyboards and so forth that are necessary for them. Also, the installation and the removal of the old equipment in our patrol vehicles. The total purchase amount is $57,430. That money is available in the police department's capital equipment fund now. This was money we were setting aside to purchase radios. The radios can really wait. That's something we need to do next year, but we can use those funds this year and then replace, replenish them next year with the money that would be there for the laptop computers in the 2020 budget. So if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer those.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Chief? Any discussion from the council? John?
Sorry, I'm getting here. I make a motion to approve the purchase of 11 GTAC tablets and related accessories from CDWG in the amount of $49,510, and the removal of old equipment and installation of new for $7,920 from superior emergency response vehicles for the police department at a total cost of $57,430 to be paid out of the capital equipment fund.
Is there a second? George? You went away.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
Chief, I just have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
How long will it take for the equipment to arrive? When do you think you'll see installation?
I think we'll probably see, be up and running in about two months, between the installation, the removal, and then getting the new equipment in. That's if I were, like tomorrow.
Okay. And then, I know the computers are five years old, but do you think there's any value in selling those?
There's some residual value. It's hard to say until we get them on the market. It's like a lot of things with electronics, the price drops, you know, the day you buy it, and then five years later, they're not worth nearly as much. So we'd really have to test the market, but purple wave would be the way I'll be talking with Sean about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
That brings us to item five, which is discuss the 2020 budget. Dee?
We emailed you the fourth draft of the 2020 budget last week for your review. With each draft, we've continued to review and refine all the numbers in each funding department. The draft is before you tonight for discussion, includes several proposed changes that were listed in the staff summary, and we'd be glad to go over those if you'd like. After those changes, there's a 2020 general fund budgeted unencumbered cash deficit of $12,062, or a cash reduction, I should say. However, as a reminder, $100,000 for the Parkmaster Plan is being budgeted again in 2020 due to the uncertainty that it will be spent in 2019. Although $100,000 has been budgeted in each of the years 2019 and 2020, the intent is just to spend it one time. Therefore, the general fund unencumbered cash balance will include that unspent $100,000 at the end of 2019, and the funds will be spent in 2020. Taking that into consideration, there's actually an increase of $87,938 in the general fund's budgeted unencumbered cash. I'll be sending the notice of hearing to the newspaper on July 23rd for a July 25th publication. The budget hearing and adoption is scheduled on August 6th at 7:00 PM, and that will be a special meeting. The expenditure amounts published for each fund are the maximum. You can reduce them, but you can't increase them. If something is added to increase the budget, a special meeting and rep publication would be needed. If there are any desired changes to this current draft, it would be very beneficial if they can be discussed tonight, as this is our last opportunity to get your consensus that you all agree with the changes before the notice of hearing is published. Your guidance tonight would be very much appreciated, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dee. Can we talk a little bit about some of the proposed changes? Sean, would you like to take the planner that we've added in and just kind of share your thoughts and passion behind that?
Sure. During my 60-day report, we kind of talked about, you know, what I've observed so far to this point. Not so much shortages in staff or anything along that lines, but what Jack used to do as a city administrator and what my capabilities are and strengths as well. At the time, I'd never put forth in the original budget or anything like that for a planner because I'd much rather have a more further defined goal and path in mind before I started presenting anything. Just since we originally put out the draft budget, we have finalized that, not finalized, I should say, but refined it a little bit more. I originally had proposed or approached two different individuals. One of them is a part-time planner with another city. It's a very similar city to Park City, and they had been fulfilling that capacity for quite some time. Great recommendations. Actually, it was our city attorney that knew both of these individuals, had made the recommendations, and then another one was a consultant, but a certified qualified planner, consultant, not an engineer or an architect type. So over this past week, I've talked with both of them again. One of the applicants, although excited about the opportunity and the challenges it presented in their current capacity supporting this other city, some things have come up, and quite honestly, they don't have the bandwidth to be able to dedicate time to this community. The second individual I met with earlier this morning, we had a great two-hour-long discussion as far as what we would be looking for. What I view in a planner for this community is it's kind of like dipping your toe into the pond to make certain this is the direction we need to go. I'm not ready to make a commitment to a full-time planner. I don't know if we have the throughput or the obligation to do that, but I do want somebody that's got that professional expertise and background. In my 60-day take to council, my report to council, I did explain that I'm more focused on processes, policies, and procedures. And quite honestly, our planning and zoning documents are woefully out of date, so I'm looking for that planning expertise that can not craft one from start, but actually take the best ideas from other communities, benchmark other communities, and kind of come up with a compilation of what's the best practices out there, and then obviously what fits Park City. Like I said, I had a great discussion with him today. The next step going forward with this individual would be to sit down, once our city attorney's back, he gets back next week, and then our building official is gone for a couple days, but towards somewhere around the 18th of this month, we're planning on getting our planning permit tech, Debbie, Bob, city attorney, all of us together to kind of sit down and have a further discussion with this individual, because to me, my philosophy is more a team concept, not just what I'm looking for, but I want to hear what their frustrations are with our processes and procedures and going. So I'm very confident when we discussed this with the mayor a week or so ago, we had kind of thrown, okay, the wedge in the budget of $50,000 for a planner. I don't think we'd be anywhere near that, quite honestly, because it wouldn't be an employee, it would be on a contracted basis, more than likely starting off at a certain number of hours on a weekly basis. One thing that I was insistent and passed along today is, it's not just a consultant to where he or she could be at their office, but I need them to be part of the team. I need them to work some here in Park City, so that way when we have developers come into the community, we can sit down, and if it happens to be on Wednesday afternoons that that individual's here on a regular basis, then we can set up those meetings to where building official, planning director, police, fire, everybody all gets in the same room so that we can still have that philosophy that Jack had tried to implement to where we're very responsive to developers, their needs, and have quick turnaround for what they're trying to get accomplished.
Brandy, I had to throw this out, but would you like to talk about the CCUA and the increase in the CIP?
So since CCUA is looking at building a water treatment facility here in the next few years, we wanted to start putting some money aside, some extra money to help fund that, and then a lot of the equipment there at CCUA is getting older, and we don't have anything really set up to replace it, so we wanted to create extra money into a CIP fund. That way, that way the money is there, and we're not coming back to the city every time we need to go buy a piece of equipment or whatnot. So we decided that Park City would put $5,000 a month to the side, Bel Air would put $5,000 a month, so right now, I don't remember the amount that we have going in there now, but that would give us $120,000 a year set aside into the CIP reserve. So I feel like it's probably just best practice for us to do that, so like I said, we're not coming back to each city each time we need to purchase a piece of equipment to get more funding.
Okay. And then on the sidewalks, you'll see that increase there, but last year in the budget, I had $20,000 put in there towards sidewalks because we were working on that. $20,000, as we all know, will not go very far in sidewalks, so I wanted to make sure we put another 20 in this year, just so we can start building something, so at some point we can take on some piece of our master plan and like put something into action and have some money towards that. So anybody else have any? John?
Yes, and I wish I would have thought of this a while back to have made this much easier, but years back, we've done some crack sealing on roads, and I just wonder like, and I may have, I apologize if I missed that, and that was something we did discuss, I'm forgetting, but I've just noticed a lot of the areas where the roads are starting to pull apart again, we've done some part-time help through the years, and we haven't done it in the last few, and I just wondered if that was something that maybe could save us some money later on tearing out roads.
So as everybody knows, going back to the crack sealing, we had two successful years where we were very good at that, and then we've tried to run it before, and even last year in the part-time and seasonal, we were unable to fill those positions. We just couldn't get a good crew together to start working on it. I mean, it's something we could definitely explore, but the drop-off where we went from those couple of good years has been we have not been able to fill those seasonal positions. I don't know if that really answers the question for you.
So it's not a funding issue really? I mean, is there, we have like special street and highway or something, or is this appropriate time for us to make sure that we have that just in case whether we need to contract it out or see if they fill properly next year?
Dee?
The part-time is funded, it's in the budget. So if we can find people, then we got, we've got the money to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
I'd had some side questions and emails, and I appreciate you answering all those. In your synopsis, I was trying to scan back through here, did, where did we end up on the employee raise budget?
It's in, it's in the budget at 3%.
3%. Okay. Now, I appreciate everything you did on this. I think I tracked with everything, and obviously don't have any other questions.
George?
Yeah, I like the way the budget looks now as opposed to before. I like that the planner position budgeted $50,000 as a contract to kind of give Sean some leeway in doing some of the things that he has to do, but also bringing somebody else in here. If we get new development coming in here, having a planner set aside where they can come in and just talk to him and work with Sean a little bit, but also give us some guidance and direction as a planner, so I appreciate that fact. I like the sidewalks, that's something that we, I mean, we have to, we're looking at, but I think we need to budget that as well. The $20,000 is, I think is appropriate at this time until we know further as far as where we're going down the road with the sidewalks, so I appreciate all the hard work. The question I have is that new unemployment rate, what is that exactly?
Point, .53.
The new unemployment rate we received for 2020, what is that?
.53%.
And that dictates reducing the total salaries and benefit costs?
Yes.
Okay, and it's based on number of employees or?
It's a percentage of salaries.
Okay. Thank you.
George?
Well, I, you know, I think the raise is important. As you all know, we spent a few years, and we didn't keep up with what we should have been doing, and then we had to really, really dig deep all at once, and I think it's important that we keep up with that every year and not drop behind like we did for a while. And so I think that's very important. Thank you.
Sean?
One thing I kind of want to touch on too is, we need to do something different to create another revenue stream for us, and it can't always come back to the mill levy. So really what we're doing every year is we're kind of copying and pasting our budget with some tweaks, but for the most part, it's a copy paste, and we see inflation on everything, you know? So money's got to come from something, and then we always have to go back and you hit the mill levy. But if we ever want to do anything more, if we want to do more to our streets, we want to build more sidewalks, or we want to do extra things, we need to come up with a way for a different revenue stream that can help support some of those. And I think this year, the council, we should have a discussion about sales tax increase and what we would do and try to get something on the ballot this year, because it always, it always comes back to the mill levy, and then the burden is always on the residents of Park City. And you always hear a lot of people talk about the size of Park City and the size of our police department, and people always think that's out of ratio, but when you look at the traffic and the draw that comes in town, think about some of the retail stuff that we see and some of the new businesses that come in where people outside of the community could help fund some stuff that we want to do. And I know there are some of you that have been on the council in the past, and this was kind of brought up, and it didn't go well, but I don't know if anybody's really paid attention, but over the last couple of years, we've seen communities do it where increases in sales tax have passed. We would need to put together a plan, how that would be, and pitch it, and pitch it well to the community and market it well, to see if we could get the citizens to buy in on that and approve something. But, you know, we always come back to streets. We always have a set amount. Street prices go up every year. We can't raise the mill levy enough to cover the streets. We need to create a revenue stream that we could fund some projects. And if we could do it in such a way where people that are passing through town are throwing a few cents into that bucket for us to help us do some stuff, I think we need to look at that this year. And I would like to hear from the council, are you supportive of having some discussions over the next few months to see what it would take to put something together and support a sales tax increase where we could get some projects funded within the community? That's my two cents.
Melvin?
I agree. I mean, we could look at the sales tax.
I mean, we could look at the sales tax increase here and, you know, a little bit like that. But I had a question. We had fifty thousand dollars set aside to fix the ditch at Fifty Third Street. Is that still in the, the streets and highways, I guess, or?
He was talking about the fifty thousand that we pulled from MTB along with the hundred thousand that was for the parks that went into special streets and highways. It was earmarked fifty thousand for that drainage.
The fifty thousand is there.
Okay.
I'm glad you told us what it is because I was going to ask because I couldn't.
I mean, that's an eyesore plus the Meridian Strip, you know, just got half pricked, you know? I thought we had plans and maybe coloring the bricks or something like that.
We put the fifty thousand, Sean and I have driven out there, there's been some discussion on, you know, what we could do. But again, you know, it's going to take probably more than that, so we have to figure out a way to do it. But those funds still stay there, just like the parks. I don't see that we're going to spend any of, any of that hundred thousand that, so it's just going to be carried forward and then put in there so that, you know, if in two thousand twenty, we have some project come up that we have some money available. But I don't see us spending anything in two thousand nineteen. That money is still there for that ditch, it's still there for the parks, and it's still there for two thousand twenty because we haven't spent it yet. If that makes sense.
And I appreciate you guys, man, you worked, must have worked your tails off to get this together. The only thing I don't like about it is the third compliance officer budget there, so.
Okay.
I think it'd be better spent down at Public Works or for another floater down there. Maybe we can get some streets sealed up.
Okay, Brandy?
Dee, I want to tell you, thank you for doing this. I mean, I know it's been a lot of work. We've kind of emailed back and forth and had some conversations. And I've been sitting inside trying to learn this tax lid and understand it a little better. And it's crazy. And so I can, I can understand what you're going through. Last year, you know, when we were talking about the budget, I had made a comment, you know, to you guys that, because we, you know, decided not to approve our budget at first, but I made the comment that, you know, our issue really isn't a spending, it's our revenue stream. So I'm really, I appreciate you bringing up the, the sales tax. The more I walk around here, I see traffic come through here and Quick Trip and it's summer and we got all this traffic coming through. And it was something I was actually going to reach out to Ray and try to have a discussion with here in the next week about what do we need to do to figure out to get a sales tax on the ballot. And so I'd be in favor of that and would like to look at options and get a plan designed for it.
That's encouraging to hear because, you know, once again, that mill levy just covers our basic operating expense and we're never going to get additional funding unless some rapid growth to help us build some infrastructure around here to draw in more people. And I think if we do something, and even if we did one cent and you broke it up in a couple of categories and how that would be divvied up and you let some people that are passing through town help contribute to that fund, I just think it's the way to go. Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to address that too. I, I've had a lot of my questions to Dee and Sean were just trying to understand. I mean, I understood the tax lid, but I wanted, this is the first time I've seen it in practice. And I wanted to see how this trickled through the, through to our, through to our bottom line. I honestly don't really appreciate the state trying to impose their will on us and we're all smart enough to figure this on our, out on our own without their help, so. So I kind of, I'm intrigued by your idea of the sales tax. I'm always open to ideas and I think that's a valid one to talk about. You didn't ask for a decision tonight, you just asked for us to think about it. And I'm good with that because I want to give some thought to how that would affect retailers, if it would affect retailers. I don't know, it's a good idea. So yeah, I'd like to explore a little more too.
Okay, George?
You know, I confess, I don't know. What is the, what is the difference between our sales tax and say Wichita? Is theirs higher than ours?
We're all, we're all the same right now.
We're all the same.
Right now, the, the state has a six and a half cent sales tax and then Sedgwick County imposes a one cent sales tax. So it's seven and a half percent.
Are any of the other cities higher than us?
Derby?
There are, and Andover. Out of the, if I remember correctly, the statistic is out of the thirty-three communities that make up the Sedgwick County, three of them have imposed a one cent higher sales tax out of the thirty-three.
Well, I, I know there's, there's a lot of, I know that we've got a lot of heavy industry here and I know they probably are probably tax exempt on sales tax. But I do see our, our I thirty-five corridor, there's a lot of, there's a lot of business transacted there and I could see, I could see some revenue there. I would be interested in looking at it, see what it, you know, stick our, stick our toe in the water and see how it feels.
And the one thing I like about it too, one, I think it, it takes support of the governing body and then it's really communicating the message and then letting the public decide if they think this is a good option for us. Because I, I feel like I've seen or feel a shift in the community where people want more and they're willing to pay a little bit more, but they want to feel good about what they're doing. And, you know, when, when we do mill levy increases and, and it's just to cover our expenses and we don't see any change, you know, yeah, I feel good if I need the police department, they're going to be there right there if I walk in here, that, you know, somebody's going to take care of me at the front desk or I'm going to be able to meet with the building inspector, you know, those things make me feel good. But if we really want to, you know, help, help those streets, get parks going, do some additional things, we have to come up with some different funding because it can't come back to the mill levy every time.
I, I think, I think you got to think outside the box there. You know, I've told you before, I, I went to a wedding over at Maze and, and seeing what was going on in their rec center and talking to their recreation director, they, they pulled down a tremendous amount of revenue at that rec center, just, just didn't rent it out. It, it's amazing. I, I would imagine that, that their revenue is far outweighs what that rec center cost them. It seemed to me like, you know, they have, he told me they was almost always bucked. And, you know, they, they do things a little different. But that's what I say, you got to, you got to look outside the box because, you know, working in government all these years, first thing I noticed after the wedding is they held out this bar with all this booze and stuff. And I thought, that's a government building, how'd they do that? And they explained to me how that worked and, you know, it's, those guys know how to make money over, if you want to think about it.
I think even the library is a good point. Some of the stuff that's been going on in the library, we've opened up, we, we allow alcohol in there. We're doing passports now, we're doing, they just keep growing different things that they can do. And it's really amazing what the library has been able to bring in. You know, we've paid for an additional parking lot, wrote a check for it, put that in, the parking lot's full. So it's, it's time for us on, on this side to try to figure out ways to be creative. I know what can we do where we can get some additional revenue?
I'm not a big advocate for people drinking, but if you, if you want to rent a building out to have a wedding, for crying out loud, you got to let them toast the bride and groom. And if, as it is now, we can't do that. And so they go to someplace where they can.
Melvin?
Well, I think another way to get revenue in is more businesses in here too. And if I'm remembering right, don't we have a one percent sales tax on Echo Hills addition more than rest of the city or not? Did we not? I thought we did at one time.
No.
Passed something on that.
It was discussed.
Never passed.
Never did pass, okay.
So I say a lot of times, I look, go to a store and buy something, I don't even look at the sales tax board, you don't. I mean, one penny on a dollar is nothing, so.
John?
What, I guess as someone that lived through a prior proposal for a sales tax, you find it funny that, the cities that had, the three out of the cities that had the one percent, what are they? Well, I was sitting there trying to figure it out right now. I do know actually Derby is only at eight point zero, so it's an extra half cent. Hayesville is a full cent at eight and a half and I was trying to look for the third.
I'd say it's Maze or Andover, I think.
Andover's the one that's got on there.
But Andover's Butler.
Right, yeah. But part of it, I think, yeah.
It's all Butler. I mean, I guess, and if you look at mill levy also, you'll see that coincidentally, the towns that actually have the higher taxes tend to have the best growth, which is very interesting. But I will say, Park City is, is made different than a lot of the towns around us. We're not just residential, which residential, you can tend to have good support for it if the project's well. But when you have a lot of industrial stuff or you have retail like Jim was mentioning, understandably groceries, a lot of people may not think about the sales tax, but when they buy a car, that's where things change. And a car dealer here in town, which was a very strong opponent of our last one, was very, very boisterous against our sales tax proposal. And their problem was they're one of the highest volume fleet sales companies in Kansas and one percent is substantial to them. So they spent money to oppose it. And I'm telling you, it, for those that were around back then, it, it was, it was ugly for a while. So I would just say, maybe learn from our past, learn from, what's Derby if they're a half? What did they spend the money on? What, where did they get the support? I mean, what are the different dynamics of town of, is it for parks and recreation? Because in my opinion, I don't feel like we should raise sales tax to keep our roads nice. I mean, I think that's something that should come from our operating budget. People, I mean, I feel, I know Bel Air recently, several years back, they passed a sales tax increase or tried to, to fix potholes or fix their bad roads. Well, I mean, I, my, I just think that's something that we should take care of ourselves, the sales tax increases for something, you know, above taking care of, holding the fort down. So I guess I would say we need to be very choosing what the project is that we're picking for a sales tax increase because companies that you, you don't think are going to oppose it will strongly oppose it. Motorcycle dealers. I mean, these companies that are, that are, that are having to bid on projects or bid on sales, it makes a difference in their operating.
I would agree with some of that to a point, but, you know, the other thing is, is look at the amount of traffic that gets brought in town that's not people that live here, that are tearing up the roads. So, you know, there's arterial streets that are used daily by commuters that are just coming through town that might be getting gas or something where we could capture a few things. And I, and, and I think the one, the one business that we're, that you have discussion about, that's a legitimate thing, but I'd also look at internet-based sales and what people are doing and think about the communities in McPherson, Hutchison, and other outlined communities that have higher sales tax and dealerships that people are going to. So just remember it's.
No, no.
Yeah.
And I understand what you're saying, I'm just telling you.
Right.
They will spend the money to oppose it because it affects their bottom line. And I'm telling you, they come to the meetings, the planning meetings, the decision-making meetings, and they will be there, I can promise you. Because it does affect their bottom line. And I mean, and internet ads, it's, yeah, they will spend the money to save the money.
Okay. Tom?
I may stand corrected, but I believe that if you buy a new car, it's the destination sales tax. So if you buy one in Oklahoma and you live in Park City, it will be the sales tax affecting Park City that you pay. So that was a misnomer with local car dealership the last time we brought a sales tax through because they were on fire about a sales tax.
Is fleet that way too, though?
Pardon?
I'm not sure about fleet.
I can't answer that, but it's destination sales tax in Kansas if it's delivered, so. One of the other areas that we haven't looked at and we've got a lot of people outsawing is impact fees when they come into town. We give them tax breaks and we don't charge them anything for using the roads up when they bring their trucks in. So that's something I'll look at down the road. One of the things that we are miss on at Derby and Andover and some of the others I've got, we've got two school districts and both of them have rec groups and they collect a mill levy, but it doesn't go here, it goes somewhere else. So you're talking about Maze, they've got a school district contributes to that building. They built half of it and that's where the rec center is running out of. So we're at a loss, we have no money coming back. We're paying in, but we're not getting anything back on that through the school districts, so.
George?
Yeah, I would definitely be interested in sales tax. I see so many people coming off to Quick Trip and Cracker Barrel that are just passing through and why not let them help us pay for some of the things that we want to do? You're seeing some of the roads being torn up just over here on Sixty First Street, right in front of Quick Trip. And I'm sure a lot of those folks, not all of them, but a lot of folks are passing through, getting gas and whatnot, Spangles, those kind of places. We are going to have some pullback though from some of the businesses, they're going to be against it. But I think, and you look at the flourition of Derby and Maze and some of these other places, Wichita, eight percent sales tax and how we could benefit for maybe a half and just put it to, have a town meeting or something with the residents or the business owners and say, hey, this is what we're doing and why, and see what they have to say about it. Because I know before, I think it was, if I remember, was it the rec center we tried to do a sales tax? And there was some pullback on that, but times are different. And like, like Ray was saying, we need another stream to come into this city as far as revenue. And we, and I hate keep going back and doing the mill levy and hitting our residents who are already on fixed incomes and how elsewhere we can go about doing that is letting some of these other business owners help us in doing some of the things that we want for our community, some amenities, some of those things that we can actually obtain with the help of other folks. So I'd be in favor of talking about it. Thanks.
Sean, do you want to correct that sales tax for us?
Sorry about that, I was confirming which of the four, actually, it's four cities. Mulvane is at eight and a half percent, Derby is at eight percent, Hayesville is at eight and eight and a half percent, and Goddard is at eight and a half percent. Andover's at seventy five, seven point five percent, as is Wichita. So those are the four communities that are outside the seven point five percent for Sedgwick County.
And one, and once again, all I'm saying is, let's just, let's just, are we willing to talk about it? And hopefully kind of what I'm hearing is maybe there's willingness for a discussion, but that's kind of what I wanted to see, is there a discussion? Can we put together a plan? Do we have enough time to even do enough research to where we could get it on the ballot? You know, there's just so many questions, but anyway.
George?
Well, a couple of things. I, I know at the home show here sometime back, we were over at our booth and Renee Stevens stopped by and was talking to us and thanking us for everything. And we asked her how her business is down here and she said that their Spangles store here in, in Park City was their number one store. So people really, people really use that place. They use all those businesses. And the other thing, what John was talking about on the, we tried to do that sales tax for the rec center, but that was for twelve and a half million dollars. And I think, I think we were, we were, well, we had these focus groups and I think we just was biting off more than we could chew. I think, honestly, I think that was part of the problem. Had we not, you can look at this building here and, and, and think what, you know, twelve and a half million dollars was, that was, that would have took a lot of sales tax pay for that. And it would have took a while. I, I, I'm not sure we'd make that much opposition. I'm sure you'd meet some, anytime, anytime you talk about raising taxes, people are going to scream, but just how loud, I, I'm not sure. But I know they was looking at twelve and a half million dollars and I think I'm right about that, John, I'm not sure.
I think that's a little high, but.
Well, it was, it was way up there.
I was more like five or six, I thought it was.
Well, I, well, it could've been, but I was just stretching my memory, but.
My memory's not awesome either, George.
Well, I could have seen your moment, but I know it was pretty high and, and, and that was a lot of the objection. But on Fleet, I, I, I thought some of that Fleet, some of that stuff is sales tax exempt, isn't it?
For municipalities, yeah. I mean, we went, that's all exempt.
Just municipalities?
Well, there, there are probably some other businesses out there that have some-
That was just their claim.
Right. So, John?
So I was just gonna say, yeah, I, I'm supportive of having discussions about it. I just, I just want you to know that, I mean, there is, there is a, a field of opposition to it. And I guess my thing too is, is I feel like, I feel like where our city lacks is recreational stuff. I think our parks, you know, can use some tune-ups. We've talked about adding another park, have a central type park. You know, maybe if we mirror some, look at some other communities that have already kind of learned from their wounds and see what helps us grow. But yeah, I, I do agree with you about what you said about people tend to want to know they're getting something out of it and I feel like that's something that, you know, if they pay a little bit more in sales tax or whatever and they have a nice new park or a, whatever it may be, that, that's a game changer.
Okay. Jim?
One last thought was just to, cause I'm sitting over thinking about this, we could, there's gotta be a way for this to be on a project that somehow could benefit retailers. That would, I mean, we, let's just give it some thought, cause, you know, if it draws more people into town, they're gonna shop at their store and that may offset their, their issues. Just make it a win for everybody, but that's all I had.
Okay. I didn't want to get off topic there, but Dee, once again, thank you for all the hard work that you've put into this. And she just kind of outlined this earlier, the notice for the 2020 budget hearing will go to the Varken Valley News on July 23rd. We'll have that publication notice for the public hearing and then on August 6th, we'll have that public hearing and adoption. So just, I know the last time we had a little hiccup at the, the finish line and we had to come back and this is a special meeting, so just appreciate input and comments from everybody. And it looks like we don't really have much changes to go forward unless you come up with something else that, as you're tweaking it, that comes back out. But I can't really see that there'd be anything at this point. So with that, we'll move on to closing comments and we'll start with Jim.
Enjoyed seeing everybody at the 4th of July parade and stick, thanked them for sticking around for an extra hour to put rain in so we could have the parade. I know my daughter extremely enjoys and looks forward to riding through the parade just to sling candy out at everybody. So thanks for everybody making her day. That's all I have.
Brandon?
I have nothing tonight.
George?
First, I want to thank Sean for the trees, they, they look good. Thank you. And I told him the other day when we met, you know, I, I am really glad for the police department, you know? I, I am glad to see them getting their equipment and stuff and, and as the chief well knows, he, he was around here when we first started. You know, in, in the early days, the people that, that built this department, you know, we had to buy our own weapons, buy our own leather. If you wanted a vest, you had to buy it yourself. We have come a long ways and, and I am so thankful both for, for the officers and, and their safety. Like those, those computers, you know, three or four seconds can be a matter of life and death and it's, it's very important that their equipment is working and working properly. And I'm just tickled to death that the money's there to do it. I'm happy, I'm happy for it.
George, I don't want to take away from that, but I just want to say overhaul as a city, we have done so much better. If you look back to years past, there was so much opposition to anything new. I mean, even recently having public works vehicles with holes in the floorboard that, you know, have been there for years. We, we've really been able, and, and that, that comes back to the council. I mean, you all have been supportive of doing pay raises and getting our compensation package where we should be, getting our, our equipment across the board. And, and it's just exciting to see that, that we're in a council and a group that sees the value and hopefully improves morale and makes us a desirable place to come work and live.
You, you're right, Mayor. And, and I'll go back when I was chief of police. I got a council member come to me one morning and he was mad that I saw a police car down on Harry Street and I want to know what one of our cars was done down there. Said, I want an answer. So I went, check. What it was, was very simple. The officer had worked a 1048 or an injury accident. The victim was at the hospital and the officer had to go there to take care of his investigation. And that's how far we've came. You know, we've got a, we've got a governing body that understands how things work, but I, I remember, you know, that's the way it was. And we've come a long ways and, and, and I'm happy for it. I'm just tickled to death.
Thanks, George.
Did a good job, chief.
Tom?
I like what we've been doing, but we need to keep in mind as a council that there is a fine line there that we don't want to try to push too much, too hard, too fast. And we just want to keep working at what we're doing or we'll bring our own people out. They will be back like they were the last time on the tax, uh, sales tax. That was surprised on some people just before it happened, I believe, and they were very active in the neighborhoods and brought a lot of people out. So we want to be careful. We need to show them what the benefit of doing a sales tax is. What are we gonna, what would be the projected value of that and sell it? So, and then we need to let them know that there's some kind of a benefit by doing that too, going down the road. The other thing is, the bad news I'd like to let everybody know is I-235 between Broadway and Meridian will be shut down July the 19th and will not reopen until July 22nd. They're gonna be taking bridges out and they will try to open it up sooner, but they're planning on being shut down all the weekend if anybody uses that, so.
Every day.
Pardon?
Every day I drive it.
Well, it's the weekend, Friday night it's gonna shut down and won't open, it's not scheduled to open back until Monday morning, so.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Melvin?
Wanted to say I enjoyed the activities we had at July 4th there and I like what one councilman says, every meeting is a budget meeting. So that's all I have.
George?
Yeah, I like, thank everybody that came out to our parade. I know the weather had something to do with that, you know, losing that one hour and having it later, but when everything was said and done, we had a lot of folks that came out, a lot of kids that came out, a lot of folks that showed up at the park and I wanted to thank them. I always look forward to seeing my, my grandsons and my daughters at the park and also at the parade. Thank you.
John?
No, I have, I have nothing. I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. And George?
Second that.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 7-0. Thank you all.